See, seems like it. It seems just, seems just natural that you'd be here.
Seems like it. It seems just, seems just natural that you'd be here. Seems like it.
Look, Alan's on Zoom. All right, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the Clear Lake City Council meeting located at Clear Lake City Hall Council Chambers at one four zero five zero Olympic Drive Clear Lake. Today is Thursday, November third, two thousand twenty-two, and this is the regular city council meeting beginning at six P M. My name is Vice Mayor Perdok, and I'll be sitting in for the mayor who's on Zoom. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the roll?
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Councilmember Claffey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perdok.
Here.
Mayor Sloton.
Here.
As a course and matter of these meetings, I want you to know that these meetings are viewable in person here at the council chambers and also via live stream on the city's YouTube channel. We also invite people to join us on Zoom, the Zoom link listed within our public announcement for this meeting. All items on the agenda will be open for public comment before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce them, introduce written material into the record at a public meeting on any item or request to provide a copy of a writ of any written material to the Administrative Services Director or City Clerk prior to the meeting date so that the material may be distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Speakers must also restrict their comments to an item as it appears on the agenda and stay within three minutes. The mayor has a discretion of limiting a total discussion time for an item. So with that, Mr. Flor, any changes to our agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have roll call?
We did.
Oh, did I miss that?
No, you.
You said here. You said here, how are you feeling, Mr. Mayor?
I guess a little fuzzy.
Okay, so you're present there, but.
A present there, but still COVID is not doing too great.
I'm moving around on the agenda. I do it a little different than you tonight.
Okay.
All right. So, Mr. Claffey, would you mind meeting us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi.
Pledge allegiance to the United States, to the Republic, to which we stand under God.
Everyone. Mr. Jones, would you mind offering an invocation? Thank you, sir.
Our kind father in heaven, we're grateful for this evening. We're grateful that we could be gathered here in Clear Lake City Hall Chambers to do the the work of the city and our citizenry and constituents here. Ask a blessing be upon us so we can do that work well and faithfully and that we could serve the, we're grateful for these opportunities. We're grateful for the rain that's come here and that will come and pray that will nourish our area and bring life back. We're grateful for the items that are on the agenda tonight and pray that the council will be inspired to do the right thing on behalf of the citizens here in Clear Lake. And this is your prayer, the name of thy son. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, now we'll get to that. Mr. Flor, any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second, I have a motion by Councilwoman Overton and a second by Councilmember Kramer. Are we doing a roll call? Are we doing? Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Oh, that's right. Thank you, David. I appreciate that. Could we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Overton. Councilmember Kramer.
Hi.
Councilmember Claffey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Perdok.
Hi.
Mayor Sloton.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is presentations. Our first presentation of the evening will be by our Clear Lake Police Department and Animal Control, and it is the November's Adoptable Dogs. Chief White.
Good evening. We will not be having adoptable dogs because of the correspondence of the, we just had the ones last week, so.
Okay.
There's no real update to provide. As far as overall numbers, I can tell you that since that meeting, they did transfer numerous animals out, so they are making forward progress on that and continuing to try to get dogs adopted. There's plenty at the shelter if anybody wants to get a holiday dog and keep them, they check on, check out with the shelter and see what they have. The listing's available on our website, clearlyca.us. If you click on Animal Control, it'll take you to North Bay Animal Services and provide all the information.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have a current head count on our canines at the shelter?
I think we're still close to the seventy number because we had some leave, and then there were some that have come in, but I, my understanding is they're making forward progress. I went out there yesterday and things were looking better.
Thank you.
They still need to, to clear out.
Yeah, that was concerning. I'd also like to thank members of the media and our public that are sharing this information, that we do have dogs available for adoption, and I hope that the public and any visitors that are interested in adopting a dog could help us out, find themselves a lovely pet.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Mayor, one other update was we did have a visit from the grand jury. They came by the animal control shelter and they gave us a, an email saying they're very impressed with the progress the city's made, in particular the relationship with North Bay, so I'm sure they'll continue doing their work. We'll hear something more official, but they sent us an email regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations on the good work you're doing out there.
Thumbs up.
Next on the agenda, presentation and, and of certificates of appreciation for our Halloween, Halloween event volunteers.
Just one second, sir. Good evening. Monday, we had our annual city Halloween where we do candy bags and we had pizza for the members of our community. So I just wanted to share a few pictures and information about it. It was our thirteenth annual event since two thousand and six. It was a hundred percent funded by donations and volunteers, and we provided candy and pizza for over four hundred kids, some adults too. Um, it couldn't have happened without the generosity of Cecil's Pizza, who donated thirty pizzas to the event.
Wow.
So here's some photos. Um, we're, here's a list, a complete, a complete list of the sponsors who donated all the candy and the pizza, and we have certificates for everybody right now.
Would you like to read those names?
Yeah, sure.
And then we could present since they're not here.
Perfect. So we had Cecil's Pizza was the biggest. We had Vicky and Chuck Leonard, who came, who come every year. We had Chief Andrew White, Alan Flora, Karen Valentine, Michael Peralt, Peg TV, Melissa Swanson, Elvis Cook, Mark Roberts, Justin Sturgill, the Veramontes family, Erin McCarrick, Nikki Burrell, Daniela Justice, and Russ Perdok.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peg TV. Thank you, Thomas. You do a lot. Thomas does a lot of work in the background, but wouldn't be possible without you. Thank you very much. Chief?
While he's doing that, I do have one more thing to add. It's not regarding city Halloween. It's regarding the trunk retreat that happened. It would not have been as big and as successful without Joyce Overton stepping in and really doing it good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your help on that presentation. Next is our public, public comment. This is time for any member of the public to discuss the city, to the city council or address the city council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under the public comment, and the council cannot take action on any non-adjutant items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed in the next available agenda. Please note that public comments will be limited to three minutes. I have one request for public comment, and that would be by Mr. Bruno Sabatier, our supervisor for District Two.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
It's on.
Usually I'm much louder than this.
They have to get right on top of it.
Vice Mayor and council members, I spent a afternoon one day at Main Street Bar and Grill outside eating some food, and I couldn't help but smell what was coming down from the pump station. And as I've been driving next to the sewer pump station, also near the senior center, I am now purposefully lowering my windows just to see, is there a smell? And my reason for doing so is we should never be smelling that. A, it should not be something that we're subjected to, especially near businesses. There's houses that live nearby these facilities. So I've been working with special districts, and I just wanted to let you know, as well as the public, that now they are collecting complaints.
Go ahead.
Just making sure. Now they are collecting complaints before they weren't keeping track of that data, but they are keeping track. And so if anybody is subjected to a smell of sewage around the pump stations, please call seven oh seven two six three zero one one nine. And then I hope to come back to you all for when we have some of that data so that we can have a bigger discussion on how we can ensure that that does not happen. I know that I did not enjoy my time at the Main Street Bar and Grill when I was eating, and I am certain that the owners of that restaurant probably would like to have that go away completely and never have to be subjected to that again. And again, we have some pump stations nearby residences, and that is the same scenario as far as I'm concerned. So just know that we're looking to collect data before we can decide what action to take. Right now, our director is looking at other potential fixes also to reduce the smell, and eventually we'll accumulate all of this information and bring it back to the council so we can have a larger discussion on what to do next. But just wanted to alert you.
Thank you very much.
I see you here, but you're also out there.
Thank you for your attention to that.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please come up.
Hi, everybody. I'm Margaret Garcia. I just was wondering what the status is with the splash pad? And, and is that the extent of the, the designs or this things that are going to go in there? Because it looks very sparse.
Right, and as, as we shared, we can't discuss that with you, but I would ask you to maybe contact Mr. Flora or one of his staff members, and they can get you up to date on what's happening with the splash pad.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mean, I could share.
Okay.
So the equipment that is installed, that's all that's going to be there. There is a piece of equipment that we're waiting on for the controller. And there's a little bit of dirt work and grassing needs to be done around, but the splash pad itself, all the equipment is there.
In other words, all those, the things that, I guess, bring water down, that's it, that's the.
Yeah, all the objects above ground will be spraying water. There's buckets that will dump, and then there's also sprayers that will be coming out of the ground.
And when, when do you think that that's going to be complete? That's the other thing I was wondering.
If you'd like me to address that, um, so the part is supposed to be in in the next week or so, and we, as I said, we have the dirt work at this point. It will probably be open and operational sometime in the spring. We don't expect to open it up to the public this winter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Flor, for updating us on the splash pad. Okay, next is our consent agenda listed. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there someone on Zoom?
I have a hand raised on Zoom.
Please go ahead.
Cheryl Allman.
Sorry, I'm on a tablet. I didn't mean to have my hand raised.
Okay.
It happens. Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
There are no other hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. Any changes from council? Any items to be pulled? Anyone from the public wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda or on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on this item on the.
Saying none may have a motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Kramer and a second by Councilmember Claffey. All those in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Benny? Or do you, do I need to do a roll call? I'm going to do a roll call under the advice of legal counsel. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Through all of them, all right.
Council. Councilmember Overton.
Hi.
Councilmember Kramer.
Hi.
Councilmember Claffey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Perdok.
Hi.
Mayor Sloton.
Hi.
All right, moving on to regular business, item number nine, consideration of adoption of resolution two zero two two authorizing the application and adoption of the PLHA plan for the permanent local housing application program. Sorry. I thought he said allocation. Mr. Flora.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. So back in two thousand seventeen, Governor Brown signed a number of housing bills and one of them, including establishing a seventy-five dollar recording fee on real estate documents, and part of the funding for that went into a fund that created this permanent local housing allocation program. Each jurisdiction in the state receives an allocation of funds every year based on the transactions that are recorded. There's a competitive side to the program, and then there's this allocation side, which we still have to put an application in, and there's program requirements, but it's not competitive for the, the funds that we have allocated to us. So over the five-year period, they're estimating Clear Lake's allocation to be a little bit over eight hundred seventy-five thousand. So it's an enormous amount of money, but it does add up. This was something that was not well publicized to the jurisdictions. I know here locally in our county, we didn't even realize this money was allocated to us until late last year. But we're at a point now where the twenty nineteen funds, if we don't apply by the end of this month, we will lose the twenty nineteen allocation, and they will reallocate it within HCD to other housing programs. So we need to get this plan done, and we need to get an application submitted so we don't lose that. So I guess it's in the plan. I don't recall off the top of my head what the twenty nineteen number is, but around a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, and then going up a little bit from there. So we tried to put together a number of ideas in the plan. You know, giving us some flexibility as we move forward. As you know, we do have uh, three affordable housing projects that are in the works currently. Two are under construction. One will be is in, in the planning phase and will be in construction next year. Most of these projects, there's just, you know, there's a lot of other things, you know, for example, the, the one that's in the planning phase, apparently there was some ancient volcanic ash discovered on the site, which is causing geotechnical problems and extra expenses for them. And, you know, you know, I, I don't know, you're, you're familiar with this. I don't want to get into all the details, but because of the changes in state law related to these type of projects, they don't follow the normal process, and we don't have the normal opportunity to condition these projects, require off-site improvements and so forth for, you know, transportation impacts, for example. We have been able to negotiate some of those things with these developers, but I think there may be some additional things that we might like to do if we had a little bit of extra funding we could bring to the table. So that's kind of the idea on some of these. As you also know, when actually these first two projects are completed, our obligations under state law, arena allocation for affordable housing will actually be met much earlier than the state's goals, which is a little unusual. But there's also uh, state goals for developing median and moderate income housing, not the affordable stuff, which, you know, we're not anywhere near meeting those allocations. And, you know, we all know that there's just a general problem here in Lake County and the city of Clear Lake, and, you know, developed market house. So I would like to, to use some of this money for that. It does allow us to use this funding for workforce housing up to a hundred and twenty percent of the average median income. So I think there's some stuff we can get into sort of the entry level. I mean, kind of in the area of what we're trying to focus on with the homestead program and that type of thing. So those are some of the, some of the things that we've went to the, put into the plan in hopes it'll still provide us a little bit of flexibility in figuring out the details of that. We at least need to apply for the twenty nineteen amount, as I mentioned, for the end of this year. My thought on that was to put that funds towards the infrastructure that's still not complete at the Hope Center. For part of it, I don't think it will take the whole amount, and then use the remaining amount for acquisition of few pieces of property for the workforce housing piece. And, you know, I don't know how much into the weeds you, you want to get on that, but I think there's a number of options there. For example, there's some city-owned property currently where there's vacant land adjacent to it that the property owners, you know, some which I've talked to, don't have a interest in really doing anything with, so maybe we could purchase up some adjacent pieces, kind of merge those together, and then make a parcel available that's a little bit more attractive for someone to develop some housing. So I don't know, maybe I should talk a little bit, give a little bit more context for the the Hope Center part of it. I know Councilmember Overton shared some concerns that she has with that. And you know, when, when projects either have a use permit or reach a certain level of investment in the city, we require through our municipal code or use permit conditions imposed by the planning commission that curb gutter and sidewalk be installed if it's not part of that. And that was part of the Hope Center project, and the costs of doing that project, I think, escalated at the end, and somehow that part of the project got missed. And the city felt like that we needed to get that project open, and so we did give them a certificate of occupancy without completing that, which is not something that we like to do or really an advantage that, you know, we give other people in the community when they do projects, certainly acknowledging that. Now, at the time, they had a plan, and then they applied for additional funds to do the project as well as some other improvements there. And then I'm not familiar with the exact details of what happened, but those grants were not successful. And so at this point, I'm not aware of any funds that they're pursuing. You know, if the council wasn't, doesn't want to choose that project, that's fine. At this point, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get curb gutter and sidewalk at the Hope Center. And so I thought that might be something that could be done relatively quickly and get that complete, but that's kind of the overview of the plan. I'll be happy to try and address any questions you have. Of course, if you have other ideas for projects, I'm sure we can figure out a way to work that in. And I think, you know, we can come back and amend the plan later, but at the very least, we need to be able to, to get something adopted so we can apply and use the twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Any questions of staff?
Just. Just, just to clarify. The you need a specific recommendation from us for one of those projects?
No, I need you to adopt a plan that has some projects in it that we can then use to apply.
And, and then the, what, what we decide on can happen when we know that we have gotten the money. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, I just need enough projects to utilize the twenty nineteen funds at least. And then I think we could adjust from there, but the, you know, if we don't apply, if we don't adopt the plan and submit an application by the end of this month, then HCD is going to take that.
I, I get that, but all you're saying is that the, the three housing projects plus the Hope Center, you're just going to put all four of those in, and we don't have to be specific about which one we're just spending the money on. Okay.
No, I mean, I, if you look at the plan, like they, they have this formula that they want, so they ask you to put the percentage of each year's funds that you expect to use for those projects. So, you know, I took a stab at it. I expect, based on other interactions on programs with HCD, well, it can be difficult at some time. They're usually pretty flexible and working through, so I'm sure that this will be no different if we say, hey, you know, here's this idea, we need to use a lot more for this one project that they've helped go come.
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Thank you.
Mayor Sloton.
Yeah, so we can use that also as for the homestead program and also for the, to get some of our employees' housing purchased. Both programs would, would apply in there.
In some cases, perhaps. I mean, the, the funding has to go to create workforce housing that does not exceed a hundred and twenty percent of the average median income. So to the extent that a homestead program applicant, I think we probably could, I don't know if we want to do this because of reporting, but we probably could purchase property that we could then use for the homestead program, but we'd be required to verify that that applicant not only met the requirements of the homestead program, but did not exceed a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. And then similarly, as long as the city employee did not make more than a hundred and twenty percent of AMI, you know, I think that would be an eligible use.
Okay, all right, that, I guess that's something you can figure out and see.
Yeah, I mean, my, my preference would be to try to use it for, to create kind of a little bit larger project, say maybe ten units or something like that of marker eight housing that was easier to kind of manage their reporting on it rather than, you know, just buy twenty random lots in the city or something like that. But we'll have to work through that, yeah.
Seems, seems like you have some flexibility, so take advantage of it.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before I open it for public comment? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? It's welcome to do so now. Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for action.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, I guess it's Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-one, City of Clear Lake, authorizing resolution of the City of Clear Lake, authorizing the application and adopting of the PLHA plan for permanent local housing allocation program.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Councilmember Claffey. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Overton.
Hi.
Councilmember Kramer.
Hi.
Councilmember Claffey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Perdok.
Hi.
Mayor Sloton.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you all. Moving on to item number 10. Discussion and consideration of an agreement between the City of Clear Lake, the Lake County Development Corporation and the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce for the use of the Clear Lake Visitors Center Facility. Mr. Flor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. So as you know, the city entered into a lease agreement with the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce a little over 10 years ago. And that agreement technically officially ended in September, although they're also holding over clauses. But you know, it's, it's time to, to do a new agreement. But in, in addition, we've been talking for some time with the Lake County Economic Development Corporation about having more of a presence here in the city of Clear Lake. And the EDC received funding for establishment of a small business development center through the SBA in Lake County for, if not the first time, the first time in several decades. And we really want services to be provided here in the city of Clear Lake. Currently, the EDC has a physical office location in an office in the city hall in the city of Lakeport. And so we've talked with the Chamber of Commerce, with the EDC over a number of months and trying to figure out if there's a way to use for both organizations to use this facility. I believe that we have something laid out that will work well for everyone. And I don't know if I need to get into the details any more than that, other than just addressing any questions that the council members may have.
Yeah, thank you for your work on that. I did see a little discrepancy in the, in the diagram, but it's just where a desk sits and, and that can be easily, easily modified. Any other comments from council? Mr. Mayor?
Nope. No.
At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Seeing no one in the chamber, anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom.
Very well, then I'm bringing back.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could just make.
Yes, please.
It is in the staff report and actually just wanted to clarify. So my original hope had been to have the EDC and the Clear Lake Chamber adopting agreement before bringing it to the council. But because of some other priorities that were my responsibility, it took a while to make that happen. And so we're bringing it to you first. So I would like to make sure that I have the ability to make some minor changes to the agreement if requested by the Chamber of the EDC. If it doesn't, you know, impact the, the intent of what the council's approving here tonight.
That's important. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to make minor adjustments as necessary.
No second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Claffey and a second by Councilmember Overton. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Overton.
Hi.
Councilmember Kramer.
Hi.
Councilmember Claffey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pirdock.
Hi.
Mayor Sluton.
Hi.
Very well, moving on to item number 11. Item number 11 is one that involves a family member of mine. So I am involved in this. So I have to recuse myself. And I would like Councilmember Claffey to sit in my stead.
All right. Item number 11, discussion and consideration of providing city financing to complete the 36th Avenue Road in Storm Drainage Construction Project. Mr. Flor?
Yes, Councilmember Claffey, Councilmember. So this project has not been a very good example of a project, but we are where we are. So I guess back in 2020, we negotiated a deal with a housing developer to sell them 18 city-owned lots at a discounted rate in exchange for developing single-family homes on the lots and improving and paving a section of 36th Avenue. And you'll recall, the section has always been kind of a mess with the drainage there. Between, it's on the west side of Phillips, between Phillips and Eureka where because of some, some drainage problems, the dirt road can navigate it all over the place to, to avoid that. And it was almost impassable during certain periods of the year. And so we thought, rather than the city actually funding that, this might be a great way to, to get this going. Well, there were some personal and professional problems with that particular developer. The project was started and then abandoned. And we did have, the city does technically still have the opportunity to claw those properties back. If the performance, the, the terms in the agreement weren't complete, which is still not the case. But that's going to be, you know, a messy scenario that we don't really want to do if, if we can avoid it. So the developer's wife received the properties in the divorce and she brought a new kind of team to the table, which has been working to try to get this project back on track. So there were two houses that were constructed and not completed. We had all number of problems there, which are pretty much resolved now. For example, the houses weren't built according to the site plans. They didn't meet setback requirements. We had to make the new developers do lot line adjustments and all those things to make it meet all of our codes. One of the houses was built over an existing sewer line, which they had to abandon and relocate, so on and so forth. So here we are now. We have two houses that are almost complete, are for sale and have active offers. We have some of the road work that's been complete, so it's at least passable. But the developer came to us and said, you know, the market's changing a lot. We're not sure that the original plan of building the other homes and then trying to sell them is going to be very feasible. And they think it would be better to go ahead, get financing, build the homes and then rent them out because there's a, a big space in the rental market here for this type of house. They may be right, but they're asking us for some assistance in getting the road done. It's another one of those things that, you know, I feel bad for the neighbors and all this who have had to navigate this for several years. And we do need to get those public improvements complete. So what they're asking is that we provide up to 300,000 to them for construction of the new road, storm drainage improvements and any remaining utility work necessary to complete that road. If we were to do this, you know, I think we would do a number of things to try and protect that investment. I mean, on one hand, we're building public infrastructure that normally we would build anyways, right? But, you know, we made a deal and we sold the lots to them at an extremely discounted rate and exchange for, for them doing this work. So you know, we were thinking that, you know, we not just transfer the funds directly to developer, but basically pay the contracts that they have. We would have a loan agreement with them, which would require their payment. But additionally, we would receive a personal guarantee from the developers as well as put liens on some of the properties to give us a little bit more leverage. I think this is a allowable use of the city's housing funds. This wouldn't be a general fund obligation. But that's kind of where we are. You know, on one hand, I really don't like bringing this to you. But, you know, we need housing and that infrastructure really needs to be done. So if we can help facilitate the happening, I think we need to consider it. Now, this recommendation includes giving them 20. I mean, so one, one concern I had initially was, you know, with this model, if they maintain ownership of those and they're just generating revenue from rental housing, we aren't going to wait 10 years to get our 300,000 back, right? And it's going to be difficult for them to generate, you know, a lump sum to be able to pay us off very much revenue. And their, their plan on that would be to get a loan to construct the homes, borrow the money from us for the houses. And then once all the rental housing is complete, they would put it all into one new loan, including a payoff for us under their corporation. And then, so one financing package for the whole thing and that would allow them to be able to pay us off.
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Questions for staff? Councilmember Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Flor, on said we're going to, we would be taking a, I assume a deed to trust. What position is that deed to trust going to be? Are we going to be first or are we going to be behind the, be behind the lenders for the construction?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we can, we can try to be first. I mean, that often complicates various financial institutions' willingness to do that. So, you know, I, I don't know if it will be possible to get a, get a first on that or not. That's why I think we need to have multiple ways to try to secure this for us. But, you know, I mean, even with just the loan agreement, you know, we have a way to do that, but it basically requires us to, you know, have a contract dispute in court if they, if they don't pay, right? So it would be nice to have something more than that. They said they're willing to also give a personal guarantee some type of security on, on some of the property.
It always worries me when, where from my past banking, banking experience, being in second place is sometimes becomes a disaster in a falling market. If that were to be, but I, at the same time, I, I definitely believe we need to get those houses built. I'd rather see them try to sell them as rent them or maybe rent them on a rent, the first option to buy the renter. Something that would incentivize a renter even to, to purchase the house at some point. But that's getting more down in the weeds than we can tonight. Anyhow, that was, that was my question.
All right. Councilmember Overton.
Answered. So we're going to have several different ways in the agreement to be able to get our money back, a personal guarantee, a lien on something, one of the houses or both houses that are completed.
Well, I don't think we would probably do it on the houses that were completed because those, I mean, assuming that those sell, I think they are in contract or at least have offers on them. And so that would be, you know, they, the developer would have sold those to John Doe, right? But the remaining properties, you know, I think we would have to pick some of those or all of those and have, have something recorded on them.
Yeah, because I'm wondering that if they do build the houses, if they're going to get a loan to build the houses, probably with us having a lien on it is going to be hard for them to get a bank loan on that. I, I think that's going to be a, a hard scenario for them to be able to finish.
It could be, it could be. But I mean, you know, it's also, you know, they want the, I mean, we don't have to give them everything they want either. I mean, they're asking us to help them make this happen. And I think, you know, some accommodation is okay, but that doesn't mean that we should, you know, take an enormous amount of risk either.
Right, right. I agree. I don't, so yeah, I mean, I'm okay with this as long as we have some. And I don't think the lien on the properties is going to probably be the, the way that's probably going to get.
Strongest.
Yeah, it's not the strongest thing. I don't think so either. So, so the developer, what kind of stability do they have? Have we checked it out?
Well, I mean, you just never quite know. They've been pretty successful in a number of developments in Southern California. You know, I don't know all the ins and outs of the deal here. I mean, I feel like that, you know, some developers wouldn't be asking us for this either, but these are the ones that own the property right now. And
and the road needs to be fixed for them to be able to sell the houses.
Right.
So, you know, I, I agree with that. So, well, I, I think as long as you can figure out a way to secure the best you can, then, you know, I think this is something that probably the road needs to be fixed, definitely needs to be fixed. It's been horrible for years. So in fact, most of the time you can't even pass it. I've seen police officers not have to turn around and go back the other way when they're on a chase. So, so I think it does need to be fixed. So, you know, I'm okay with this as long as we can secure it the best we can.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Sluton.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Did you, I think you said there's about 300,000 to, to fix the road and the drainage. Is, is that by estimate by our city engineer?
I, I think it's based on, I mean, they have existing contractor, contracts in place to do the work. So I think it's based on that. I don't, we did have an engineer's estimate, but I think it's quite old at this point when it was designed. So.
Okay. And how, how many houses have they built so far of the 18 lots we gave them?
Two.
Two. So can we put a lien on the, the other 16 to, to cover the 300,000?
Well, I would think that we would want to put a lien on as many as we can. Yeah.
Okay. So that's, you know, 16, that's still.
It's, I mean, it, the value of the land is going to be less than the, the loan in that case. But we're also expecting that they're probably going to be building some stuff on them and increasing the value too. But, you know, it's, that's why, I mean, I don't think the lien is, is the ultimate solution necessarily. We need to kind of attack it from different, differently.
Right. And all the, do these, these other 16 lots have, have sewer and water connections?
I don't know if, well, the, by completing the road work, they would have to have all those stub outs done in order to, to pave the road. So yeah, those would all be complete. I don't know for sure if they're all done at this moment. Okay. Yeah, it would be, it would be part of the project to have that all done.
Okay. On the other hand, I, I'm not in favor of a, of a personal guarantee. They're, they're worthless as far as I'm concerned, especially if somebody just went through a divorce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Kramer.
Yeah. Is that personal guarantee on the person that went through the divorce or the other fellow? Okay, that, it, it just as a point of interest, if there are 16 lots involved, that's spread out of 300,000 is 18,750 per lot. If they have sewer and water to them.
They're worth it then probably.
Decent. Yeah, they're going to be worth a lot more than that. So I, I, I think taking a lien on the, on the lots in some way, manner and have them paid down as, as they sell each house. Or in 24 months would be the.
Oh, I, I was going to mention, we, we put 24 months in there, although, you know, they said that they expected to be complete between 15 and 18 months for what that's worth. So.
They pay us back at the end of that period then.
Right.
I have a question. So you said there's still a mechanism for us to take back the lots at this point. What, can you give us a little, some details on, on what?
Yeah, essentially we would have to just go to court and ask the court to enforce the agreement that we had originally, which said that you will do this work within a certain period of time, which they have not done. And so we would just ask the court to enforce that. And I don't know if City Attorney Jones wants to talk about the, I mean, just in our discussions, we didn't think it sounded like a very favorable path, but.
I think that's right. It's called a right or reverter. We put it in there for this idea that if things went back, we could claw it back. We still can, but I think the mechanism to do that is, might, might be more complicated than it's worth. I think this path is, is maybe a better path for now, but there was a reason we put it in in the first place.
So would this new agreement change that in any way? So if they build two more additional houses, but then again, fill in their responsibilities, do we still have that option to go down that path or, or does it change?
Well, I don't believe that the agreement, so the, the violation of the agreement that they have now isn't related to construction of the homes. Because we didn't put a timeline on for when they had to construct them. The timeline was for when they had to do the storm drainage in the road, which, so, you know, if, if the road's done and all that is finished, then they wouldn't be in violation of the agreement anymore. But the agreement that we're putting together, I, I don't think would impact that original one, you know, based on that. But the agreement that we're putting together, I, I don't think would impact that original one be, you know, based on that.
I agree with that.
Would it supersede it?
Sort of running two separate tracks.
Uh, councilmember.
So when, when we sold that, um, property to them, it was on the agreement that they were going to build houses and sell them, wasn't it? Not rent them?
Um, I'd have to go back and look at the agreement. I don't believe that that was specified.
Put it in there, but that's what we had talked about.
You know, it's true. It's a different market now than it was two years ago. Yeah, so. I mean, there are some things still moving. I mean, the two houses that they have done, I think. There's a real high likelihood that those will sell, but you know, I mean. By the time they have the road constructed, interest rates may be another two percent higher than they are today, so.
Yeah, okay.
Um, Mayor Slaton, any additional questions for staff?
Uh, no, not at this point. The, the only comment I would, uh, again, make is, uh, I, I'm not in favor of a personal guarantee. As particularly since, uh, these people are, um, just went through a divorce. I'm sorry, man.
Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone in the room like to say something? Yes, sir, come up.
Bruno Sabate, City of Clear Lake. Um, unfortunate how messy this is. Um, this is the second property where it kind of has the same taste to it. Where there's certain promises to infrastructure that were made. And things that are having to be done by the city in order to resolve those things. First, the sidewalk for the Hope Center and now the road for this. Uh, just looking forward, because I think unfortunately, in the situation that you're in, in the city i- is you have to work with these developers. You have to figure out how to get them incentives and interest to be here. Uh, but maybe setting those infrastructure part of the agreement to be the first things that get done. So that then you don't have a situation when you're trying to claw back and there's another piece of property that's been developed with a house and that gets to muddy the water. So maybe in the future, road goes first, sidewalks go first, and then the rest can go ahead and come. That way. You could ensure that you don't have a messy situation.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hi, Margaret Garcia. Um, I'm just wanting to see if I've got this straight. This, this developer, I mean, basically promised, uh, roadwork in lieu of these properties at a discount. A roadwork and, and the lots, uh, in lieu of the discounted lots that you were going to sell them or. And so they've fallen on every step, it seems, as far as their agreement and what they've followed through with. You know, or is that, am I not understanding? It seems like it would be silly to, why not get the rest of the properties back? Because it would seem you're only going to have more problems with each one. And, and, and what's that three hundred thousand dollars for? I'm not clear on that.
Uh, city manager, city manager, if you want to respond.
It's for construction of a road.
That they were supposed to put in? And so what you're considering giving them this three hundred grand?
Uh, i- it's in the form of a loan.
Gosh, I, I understand that part, right. I mean, you know, you might consider half of it and let them. You know, see what happens there and then the other half, but it seems like you're signing up for nothing but trouble with, with this. That's all.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comment. Uh, Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom, councilmember Claffey.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion and action. Uh, councilmember Overton.
So, um, and I understand her concerns here, which is, I think, probably all of our concerns, but, um. Originally, we should have been doing the roads. It was, it was an agreement. Those lots had been sitting there forever. Uh, that probably nobody was ever going to build on. We had the opportunity to get some, something done with them. Uh, and this is going to be a loan. They're going to be paying it back. So we're not basically giving it to them. It's going to be. And, and I think, you know, of course, I don't want just a personal loan, but I do think, you know, that is another guarantee for us. So I think we need, if we're going to do this, we need to take every step. I'm okay with doing it because I think the road needs to be done. You know, and, and as long as we take every step to try to recover, keep our money, you know. Uh, sooner or later, we're going to have to do it anyway ourselves. If they didn't build, we were going to have to do it. So. I just look at it as this is an opportunity that we loaned the money, we're going to get it back and we can still use it for something else.
Yeah, I mean, if I could just add on, I mean, that is, if, if, for example, if we were to do the clawback provision. And go through the process and get the properties back, we would take money from the housing fund and build the road, so. And then sell the, sell the lots at that point, so.
Councilmember Kramer.
Yeah, I would agree with councilmember Overton, actually with lady in the audience. It's a messy situation. The original two people in it, the husband and wife are getting divorced. Now it's just the wife that's still involved. And then there's another principal other than the one that, Mr. Vono, that has the money. There's three people that are. Involved and just one of them is the one that was in the original agreement.
Yes.
Were. So all three of those folks will be. Part of the loan that's being made. I don't like personally, the agreement or personal guarantees either, but the personal guarantee would be from all three or just from the.
I, I mean, you can tell me what you want me to do, or I can get as much as I think we can get. I mean.
I, I, my feeling is that we should be securing it with the land. And then, you know, if there's some sort of early payoff as, as houses sell, then that would be even better. But we have to get it done. We have to get the roads done. We're in this far. Uh, we need to go forward, in my opinion.
Uh, are there any options in there for an early payoff?
Well, I mean, you know, this, this came up. Kind of came to a culmination last week, and so because of our schedule, I wanted to just go and get it on here. So I haven't drafted an agreement. I wanted to see if. The council is interested in moving forward with this. Um, so I'm hoping to get some direction and authority based on. You know, what you want me to do. Um, and we can add all that in, or we can just, you can tell me to get as much as I can get and. We can make it happen.
Mister Mayor.
Uh, the only additional comment is, as is, we have to make sure that, uh. We are correct in who has title now to all these properties. Is it just her? Is it a new corporation or does she, her ex-husband still have interest in it? I mean, we have to make sure that we have that covered. That's all the final comment I have. Thanks.
Uh, councilmember Kramer.
And, and at the end of the day, we've made a goal of increasing our fair, our market rate housing. And this is probably the best thing we have going at the moment. We're in the process of it. I, again, I, as messy as it is, I think it's still the best. Opportunity we have in the, in the near term. So again, so that's my final comment.
Wonderful. Um, so at this point, um, do you have the direction you need or do you need approval from the council? To execute.
Well, it seems pretty clear, but I mean, if you don't mind, just, um, if you're supportive of a. One of the options on the staff report, authorizing the city manager to develop and execute a loan agreement for completion of the thirty-six Avenue Road Project. And voting on that, that would be ideal.
We're asking for an op, for a motion.
Yeah.
Uh, if we're ready. Uh, councilman Claffey had liked to make a motion to authorize the city manager to develop and execute a loan agreement for completion of Thirty-Six Avenue. Road project.
We have a motion by councilmember Kramer, a second by councilwoman Overton. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Overton.
I.
Councilmember Kramer.
I.
Councilmember Claffey.
I.
Mayor Slaton.
I.
And Vice Mayor Perdak is abstained.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number twelve, consideration of a five-year agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. For thirty body worn cameras and a digital evidence management. Chief White.
Just getting the presentation. Uh, good evening, mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Um, the item before you tonight is consideration of renewing our contract with Axon. Enterprise for body worn camera. This time I'll turn it over to Acting Lieutenant Peterson to present the report.
Uh, good evening. So our current contract that we have is, uh, going to be ending at the end of the year. Uh, the current cost is nineteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, what that has is limited storage capacity of our cloud, uh, which is where all of our, um, body worn camera footage goes to. And other, um, evidence that we collect using the, um, Axon applications. Um, it also does not provide us, um, any actual access to Axons Respond or Performance Programs. So this is the Axon network. And we have everything except for the CCTV, the documents and the citizen video. Uh, where citizen, citizens can add evidence. Um, we don't have those options, but all the others we do. Um, through the evidence dot com portion of the Axon. So the recommended proposal is again, for five years, the cost, the initial cost would be thirty-seven thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy cents for the first year. And then each additional year after that, um, would be thirty-three thousand, eight hundred, thirty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. With a total of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three, um, dollars and fourteen cents accumulated for the five years. Um, the cost difference, uh, for the first year is seventy-eight, uh, point zero nine percent increase. And then for over the life, if you did the nineteen thousand, uh, what we have now at, for five years. Compared to what the, what it's going to be, there's an eighty-one point four or five percent increase. Uh, what's included with this is an unlimited cloud storage and access to their Axon Respond and Axon. Uh, Axon Performance. Again, right now, we don't have the unlimited access, um, for storage of our. We're going to go, yeah, that'll be, that's part of it. So, um, so the Axon Respond, what that is, is it's, um, for our cameras, it gives us GPS location of our cameras. Which is a huge officer safety issue. We have currently with our mobile, uh, data terminals that are in our vehicle. A GPS location for that, but once an officer leaves that vehicle, we don't know where they're at. Um, so this would provide a GPS location of where the officer is. And it's also will, um, provide if we activate our tasers at all, not deploy it, but just turning it on. It would send an extra alert. So if an officer was in, you know, in peril or fighting or something. And not able to get to the radio to call out, it would send the alert to the dispatch saying, hey, this has been activated, start, start more officers. Um, and during large scale events like fires, you could actually coordinate. Um, if you have people on foot, you'd be able to know where everyone is, be able to coordinate those different things, um, through the GPS. Um, and one small note, like we had, um, an officer. Had their body camera fall off during a struggle at Walmart. A citizen went by and picked it up, walked out the door with it. We did recover it, but the GPS locate, we would have been able to recover it a lot faster. So this is what, kind of a view of what the dispatchers would see. And with the different, um, labels kind of show that those are the body cameras, um, there, so. If and, you know, if they were to look, the dispatch say, this is where the officers are. So the Axon Performance, um, what that is, is it allows to have metrics to show and audit activity in the devices. So all of our devices are connected, our tasers, our body cameras, the, um, in-car cameras that we're going to be having next year. Um, so if the, uh, tasers turned on, our body camera turns on. If we activate our emergency lights in our vehicle. The in-car camera comes on, our body camera will come on. So it will be able to track all that on a management point, be able to look and see graphs and. If it's being used compared to incidents and you, the utilization, if it's being appropriate and being done correctly. Also, the, um, it will select random videos. Um, out of all the cues for supervisors to review, so it'll say, say, hey. Look at these four videos randomly, so you could evaluate, you know, e- employee performances. And, um, it's not, it won't be seen as much as like, oh, you're picking on me. No, this is a random audit that. A computer chose the officers or the supervisors did not choose this. Um, so this is kind of a view of what, how the performance would look, you know, so the different, uh. Things that supervisors would be able to see to, to evaluate. And then also the, how it would set up for the random views of the, uh, body worn camera footage or the car camera footage. So again, it would make supervisors' reviews more efficient. We'd be able to see a lot bigger picture in this. Everything be all in one for the performance and then we'd be able to evaluate, um, and make sure our policies are in line for what we're seeing. So. Questions?
Councilmember Kramer.
Yes, I had one question. What, what happens to the, to the cameras that you have now, your body cameras you have now?
So we have a dock, uh, so just, uh, we can't delete the, the videos off our cameras. Um, that's all controlled by Axon. We put them in the dock and uploads into the cloud. Um, Axon has four secure sites throughout the nation, so if one was to go down, they have three basic repetitive backups. So that's where it's all kept is.
What I'm actually asking is the cameras that you have, your officers have now. Are they going to be retained? Are they going to be turned in and they traded in? They have any value?
So the, this will work with the current cameras we have now. And then the current agreement also is, if I remember correctly. Yeah, they're going to be replaced in December because our contract, as the new technology comes out, we have a repetitive replacement of our technologies.
So the cameras you have now will actually physically be replaced.
Yes.
And is there any value to those cameras that you're replacing?
The ones that we have get turned back over to Axon, um, because they give us the new ones, we give them the old, old ones. And that's the rotation. Correct. It's, it's part of the.
White shaking his head, no, so.
Yeah.
And as it's, are, do we have, I think it was thirty-four was the number that you're getting?
Thirty.
Thirty. Do you have, are you adding more or is that the same number you have?
We're, we're folding in. So originally, when the department adopted the cameras, it was just a sworn police officers. And it was expanded to CSO. Then we expanded it to animal control. And then finally, we expanded to code enforcement. So we have these all. A bunch of overlapping agreements and acquisitions, some of which are supported. You'll notice like the cameras that code enforcement is using is an older generation camera. Now they'll all be the same. And we'll also be spreading the cost out amongst the contributing funds. So code enforcement will pay their share. Um, the, uh, measure P will pay a portion. So right now, general fund takes the primary impact for the cameras.
So again, the nineteen thousand you're paying now. Uh, does that include all of those expanded cameras that you talked about getting or?
No, it, it currently includes the, um, I think the count under that is twenty. Remember at the top, I believe it's the twenty-six that are under the full support. Um, and then we're paying. Uh, separately for licensing for the additional to get up to the, the count of thirty.
The actual cost increase is not quite as much as.
Uh, no doubt about it, they're increasing their prices. Um, I, I, you know, the problem is. The, the cost of storage hasn't gone up. In fact, the cost of digital storage has gone way down. Um, however. You know, they're making a lot of value add in their products. So before it was really just a body camera, right? It records video. Now with all this integration and the other pieces, um, you know, they're getting value add and, and unfortunately. You know, we looked at alternatives to see, and it's just, if you go away, the integration with the taser device. The integration with the car and all that stuff, it just doesn't make sense to do it and, you know, um, so it makes it difficult. I think what we did do. To try to manage costs for the city, you can see the alternate proposal, which is what they really want you to go to. Um, we stayed with à la carte and quite frankly, the city, when I came here in twenty eighteen was right after they negotiated the contract. Um, the city had a really good contract to implement body worn camera, and I know there was community support that helped fund that. Unfortunately, our usage, uh, I was looking at our rates. So in twenty seventeen, we recorded about two point eight terabytes of, uh. Video or about fourteen thousand video clips. In twenty eighteen, it went to eighteen thousand. In twenty eighteen, it went to eighteen thousand and we made a big push with our policy and everything else. Now we're averaging twenty five to twenty six thousand video recordings a year. So we've greatly exceeded across the last term contract, the storage. So I think our contract was, we've maybe eight terabytes of storage or something, and we're actually utilizing like up to eighteen or something according to the, the rep. And they never charged us anymore for that. So I guess we're kind of getting, we're paying back some of what we should have been paying before.
So the return on investment though, in your opinion is well worth it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, our risk manager, our city attorney could attest that, you know, one single case having video, it's just, I don't see quite frankly, how you can do law enforcement these days without having it. The other part is, as you mentioned on the presentation, the performance side, that if you look at where things are going, having an audit program in place is the next logical step. And right now, Lieutenant Hobbs is kind of the lead on the audit side of things of utilization. He had to make like this spreadsheet. He had this complicated formula to figure it out. And we just recently went to do it and it no longer works because of the way data is stored. So we're paying for those additional functionality. So I think your point is, yeah, there's an increase, but we're also getting additional functionality. And by doing à la carte, you know, we're selectively not choosing some other stuff because we just don't see the use case at this point, but we could always add it on later.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Claffey.
Yes, thank you. So just so I am clear, are the cameras constantly recording or are they only activated during certain moments?
So the body cameras are, they have a thirty second lead that is just video. They're not constantly recording until you turn it on. There is a, like I said, if I turned it, my body camera on, it would have thirty seconds of video ahead, but no audio. And, and then once it's activated, that's when it adds in the audio.
So for our police officers, I, I see here when the taser is activated or armed, it's triggered. If the lights in the, the squad car go on, it's triggered. Are they able to manually activate the camera as well? Are there any other triggers that would, would activate the camera?
Yeah, you can manually activate it or again, through activating the vehicle lights, once the car cameras are installed, that will do it or by activating the taser. And part of that where the, where that's good is you could be getting out of your car, walking, getting ready to walk up and then have an encounter where you have to activate your taser or something. And or if you didn't hit it right to manually turn it on, it makes sure that it turns it on when you're going to be using that, that device. So it really is a benefit and it catches that thirty seconds ahead. You know, to give you good context of why that was done. So.
So for our court code enforcement and for our animal control as well, they'll be having these, I guess, what's our, what's our policy around recording interactions?
Sorry, I mentioned before the evolution with animal control, North Bay does not use body cameras and that's a decision of their board in terms of their interactions. As far as the, the activation for the criteria, it's covered in our policy four, two, two, which is on our website. And essentially it says that the body worn camera should be activated in the following situations. And basically it's traffic stop type situations. Calls for serving, it calls for service involving domestic violence, sexual assault, suicidal persons, weapons or potential use of force, pre-planned incidents, probation, parole searches, community caretaking sweeps, forced entry, any other contact that becomes adversarial that would not otherwise require recording. We do have a carve out such that officers can exercise discretion to respect privacy and discontinuing reporting or sorry, recording when that privacy may outweigh any legitimate law enforcement interest in recording. So, you know, we've had situations where victims of, you know, very serious crimes have not felt comfortable being recorded and it's a decision, the officer, it's very difficult for us because the jury expects that, but we have that carve out. The other situation would be in like hospital settings because we may have the person that we brought there, but you may be at the hospital just getting treated. And so we try to be respectful of those situations and not be intrusive. I'll tell you that we consciously have in there, the, the should, there's a policy declaration which says we teach people a should is almost like a shall. Unless you have a good reason not to, but we intentionally don't have shall in every possible situation because we do place value in the officers using their discretion of when to record. Looking at our usage numbers, you can clearly tell they report a lot.
Great. Thank you both.
Councilmember Overton.
Well, I have seen myself where, you know, the, the video has come in handy when people have told me things and our chief has researched and viewed and said, no, this is not exactly what happened. So, um, you know, because as people tend to tell you things that may not always be. So I like that we have the cameras because that's happened several times where somebody's complained and chiefs looked at it and said, no, that's not. So having the cameras, I think are awesome. I love the idea that they're going to come on, especially when taser or if they're away from their cars and something happens. When we have these fires, police are everywhere too. And it, and you don't know if they're safe when they're out of their cars. So I think this is essential for any police department nowadays. Just with the complaints and the, the attack on police departments alone, I think this is essential for us to do. So I'm glad that we do have a system like this that we can put into our, our, you know, and keep is not just keep our public safe, but it is also to keep our officers safe. You know, and, and to me, that's important too. So you guys are out there protecting us. I, I want to be able to protect you guys. So I think this is a great idea.
And if I could just say, note, there's also studies which show that with body cameras being activated, that not only, I mean, officers should always be on their best behavior regardless. But there's also studies that show that the adversarial response from citizens, citizens generally will act better because they know they're being recorded as well. So that's actually, that's another benefit that comes out of this as well. Right. Mayor Sluton.
Again, kudos for getting our chief the best stuff that it's around. And thank you for keeping us at the highest level of, of technology in our city. It is a good thing. Thank you.
Seeing other comments by council, any public comments on this topic? Bruno gave a thumbs up. Anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to comment that this is an essential tool. I echo your sentiments, Councilmember Overton. And I love the new additions, thinking back to the old micro cassette recorders that we used to use. That saved a lot of people when those complaints came in. So I'd love to see the advances in technology.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Kramer?
We are ready for a motion. I'd like to make one.
Please.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty two dash sixty three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Clear Lake, authorizing the chief of police to enter into a five year lease with Axon Enterprise for body worn cameras and digital evidence management system.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Councilmember Overton. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Overton?
Hi.
Councilmember Kramer?
Hi.
Councilmember Claffey?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Purdock?
Hi.
Mayor Sluton?
Hi.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to item number thirteen. We're asked to give, have a discussion and give direction to staff regarding the appointment of a city treasurer. Mr. Flora, or are you going to pass that to Ms. Swanson?
Swanson.
Honorable Mayor and council members, as you are aware, there were no qualified candidates for city treasurer this election cycle. Both the regular nomination period and the right, right in nomination period have officially closed. The seat will become vacant effective November ninth. Pursuant to the municipal code, the city manager is appointed in the absence of an elected treasurer until a successor is appointed or elected. It will be the council's decision to direct staff on how to proceed. Staff has brought this to your, for your consideration tonight in order to provide sufficient time if the council decides to take applications before the next council meeting on December first. You may direct staff to accept applications from qualified electors to fill that term and make appointment at that time. Or direct staff to begin the process of a special election to fill the term or appoint the city manager at the December meeting. So it is appropriate for the council to discuss and direct staff tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Any comments? Yes.
You give a description of exactly what the, the city treasurer does. I mean, we have a finance director. Years ago, basically what they did is they came in, they transferred the money, they signed some documents and that was it. They hardly ever showed up to the meeting. And when they did, they really didn't give the report, the finance director still give the report. So I'm just curious at this point of, can you give us an idea of exactly what the treasurer's responsibility is?
Sure.
Oh, good. Go. I was looking up the municipal code right now. I'm gonna go for it.
All right. So it is in section two dash five point one. And the city treasurer shall receive and safely keep all money coming into their hands as treasurer. They comply with all laws governing the deposit and securing of public funds and handling of trust funds in their possession. They pay out money only on warrants signed by legally designated persons. And they prepare a written report and accounting of all receipts, disbursements and fund balances as of the last day of each month. They then submit those reports to the city clerk on or before the 10th day of the following month and file a copy with the city council for acceptance at the council meetings. They also may appoint deputies. And the city treasurer actually receives a three hundred dollar per month stipend per the municipal code.
At the time, that's what the council is receiving. So.
Brachially, all of these things happen without one.
Right. That's what I'm going to say. So if there was a city treasurer, they would literally have to have an office in here. And, and I don't, you know, I mean, I, okay. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that, that's, you know, because it seems like that's what our finance person does already. So I mean, it's like,
Well, I mean, if the.
Going out for a special election, I'm not.
If the council would like to give us a direction additionally on putting a measure on the ballot, not a special election, I wouldn't recommend, but at some point in the future to eliminate this as a elected position, we could do that. You may recall that this was done a few years ago when the city clerk was on there and it actually failed for some reason, but.
I don't think that people realize, you know, I mean, what, what it really entails. And I mean, we have, you know, right now there's a person out there that, you know, says, well, I always just worry about somebody getting in that really isn't qualified to do the position. And then what do we do if they're elected? And they get in and then we're in kind of the same situation as, oh, I don't know, times the county gets themselves into. So I don't want, I don't want to end up in that type of a position. So I personally would like to see the city manager just be appointed at this point in time and look at putting this back on the ballot for the next election.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Claffey.
Since staff has done this work, how many hours on do you think it entails?
I, I really have no idea. I mean, it's, it's not really that much. I, well, I mean, I don't know. I mean, some of the stuff on the deposits and things like that, that staff take care of. I mean, we haven't really made an attempt on, you know, quantifying how many hours that is, but we've, over the last few years, we've gotten a lot more efficient on all of these things for sure. And I mean, trying to separate that out for some new person would be, you know, a real mess to be honest.
Thank you.
So if we appoint you, do you get the stipend?
Well, I haven't been getting it, but if you would like to get it, no, I don't get the stipend.
So unfortunately we haven't had someone interested in this role. I do think it does play a valuable oversight role if filled properly. We can't control that. We can't control who raises their hand to take on the challenges of the city. I would hate to see it taken off. I do think that we should go with option three, where we put out a formal application process. If none of them rises to the bar, I think in December we appoint our city manager. But I do think the, the, this role is, is important and it should be filled. I hope citizens out there see the value of that and eventually fill it. Maybe next decade we'll, we'll find out. And I also think the salary should be at least on par with city council or the stipend rather. So that would be my direction.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Sluton.
I think we should proceed with what we've done the last four election cycle cycles, I believe, and appoint our city manager as the city treasurer. And then I do think that the position is becoming superfluous based on our way of managing things with a finance director. So I think at some point in time, we do need to put it on the ballot and see if people really want it or not. And if they, if we do, I suggest a, an off year election cycle.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kramer?
Yeah, this part of the process is usually meant to ask questions of Ms. Swanson or Mr. Flora. But since everybody else has made a comment, I would agree with Mayor Sluton on the, on the direction. I think the position is antiquated. It's been, it's being performed by our city manager and or our finance director. I, I, I just don't see, I don't see the need for it either.
Just as a, as a comment during, when this whole city clerk, city treasurer, city, at some point in time, there were actually county surveyors that were elected, which is totally ridiculous in, in things. So this is part of that, that technology and all that is, is taking care of these things and can be done better than other way. Thanks.
Thank you. We have not opened it up for public comment yet.
Oh, before you, before you do, Vice Mayor, I think Ms. Swanson has something to add.
Oh, another.
I just wanted to add that in the government code, there are specific positions within a general law city that are required. And that is the council, the city attorney, the city manager, the clerk and the treasurer. They're all required, whether they're elected or appointed is up to the voters of the city. And when we had it in twenty sixteen on the ballot, as you know, the city clerk did pass, the treasurer almost passed at a fifty point five percent against and a forty nine point five percent in favor of appointment. So it's very close. So we can in twenty twenty four, make preparations to put that on the ballot again, if you'd like.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor?
I, I think the reason the city clerk passed is because of, of our current city clerk. See, 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 she made it possible that that was passed.
Maybe the community doesn't realize how good of a job I'm doing as city treasurer.
I'm sure that's it. Any other, any comments from chamber? Anyone here in the audience? Mr. Sabatier?
Good evening again. I was actually thinking the same thing of the measure. I personally, I've changed my mind. Earlier I thought, yes, this is a democratic process. You have a lot more oversight. But at a stipend, even if you bring it to five hundred dollars, there's no qualifications whatsoever for the position, which means they may not know what they're doing. And they can have an impact on your finances and your finances is what runs everything smoothly, whether it's your salaries or whether it's the projects that you're trying to get accomplished here in the city and you're trying to accomplish a whole lot. I have faith that I'm voting for five individuals that sit in front of me on the dais that get to look at the warrant, just like there was today on the consent agenda to review what has been spent. Every year you guys approve an audit that the city manager works with a contractor to get accomplished, to review all your finances. To me, a treasurer only potentially creates complications unless you're willing to pay them for the rightful amount and have the right qualifications. And still, and I'm not trying to crack a joke, there still can be some blowback on that. It doesn't always mean you're going to get the right person in the position to do exactly what needs to get accomplished. So I think there is oversight without the treasurer's position. I'd be comfortable with it and I would really look forward to voting for that on twenty twenty four. I think there is oversight without the treasurer's position. I'd be comfortable with it and I would really look forward to voting for that on twenty twenty four.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, is anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on the Zoom, Mr. Ice Man.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, I I want to, uh. Before I call for a, an action, um, this has been a problem. I actually had people calling me asking questions about. The city treasurer and what, how they should vote and that type of thing, or get get some background at least, which I tried to provide, um, but I think it's confusing. Um, I I concur with, uh, Mr. Sabatia and the mayor's, uh. Comments, uh, I think it's obsolete and, uh, I'd like to see it on the twenty twenty four, uh, ballot. And until that time, we appoint the city manager to act in that stead. Those are my comments. Absolutely. Good, council member.
Only because I've been here for seventeen years and I dealt with when we did have a city treasurer, it was really a a sad situation. Um, it it, I just really feel like it's not, uh, that's what we're here for, like, like, like our supervisor said, we're here for that oversight. That's why we're appointed for that oversight. Even if the treasurer did their job and actually did their job, it's still our job to go through the warrants and approve it anyway. And and hopefully everybody is looking at those things, you know, and see that. But you're right, there's no qualifications. Anybody can get into that position and and really be detrimental to us. So I really feel like it is. Something that we should have, you know, just our finance department, you know, be, you know, our, I mean, we're the oversight. So I do think I'd like to see it on the ballot the next time and try it again. So I think if people understood. It a little better than when we put it out before, I don't think we really advertise why we're doing it. Uh, and I think we just need to push and let people know why we're, why we're actually wanting to remove that and make it just part of our city. And we just need to advertise it a little bit better and explain to people. So, um, but our last treasure was. Nothing.
Appreciate your comments and your experience. Um, we're asked to give direction to staff. I I, I'm not clear. Um, exactly, um. Mr. Mayor, would you like to start as far as what you're asking staff to do? I thought in my closing summation, I I provided my opinion.
Uh, I I think we should, uh, appoint, uh, our city manager as the city treasurer and, uh. A direct staff to hold a, ho- update at the, and and put it on a ballot at some future date to see. The, uh, position can be eliminated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Claffey, any final comments?
Uh, I'd still prefer option three. I'd like to put it out to the community. If none meet our bar, um, we can still appoint the city manager. I think we all ha- hold his financial skill in high regard. Um, so it'll be a high bar for citizens to be appointed by us, but I still think that's a better path.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Kramer.
Uh, yes, I I definitely think that we should appoint the city manager as, uh. Our city treasurer and at some certain point, whether twenty twenty four or beyond, that we should put the ballot before the voters. See if we can eliminate this, what I consider to be an obsolete antiquated position. We have, um, plenty of, as Supervisor Sabatia pointed out, we have, um. Oversight in many, many ways from the five of us reviewing the warrants each, each meeting to certainly the audit that we do. Pretty much every year, so. I think that the position and treasure is, as it stands now, is not warranted, not needed. I want to appoint the city manager on her December first meeting.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Mr. Flora, do you have direction?
Uh, it seems clear to me we have a majority, yeah.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our business section. We'll go on to the city manager and council member reports, Mr. Flora.
Yes, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, few updates. The sunflower, um. There hasn't been a giant cloud of dust, but there's been a lot of asbestos abatement. Over the last week or so, I stopped and talked to the contractor yesterday. They're expecting to be done this week and then we have. Uh, probably a couple of days of work, um, from cherno excavating to complete that project. Um, wanted to let the council know, we had a meeting, I think, maybe, uh. The mayor mentioned this during his report at the last meeting, but we, um. Had sort of a a group meeting with the, um, the county, um, some elected folks and staff of the city of Lakeport. Um, and then the mayor and council member Claffey were there discussing the rec center. Um, sort of JPA agreement. We had a presentation from some experts related to that and. Um, there was agreement on moving forward, um, sort of with a process and some polling to determine. You know, the public support related to this, and so, um, we're, we're working on an agreement related to that. So I'm just letting you know, it's, it's within my authority. There is a a cost share agreement, uh, related to that. Um, it's my understanding and belief that all the council members are in support of moving forward, um, on this process. So I plan to do so. Um, unless there's any, uh, additional feedback from the council. The youth center, we, um. Lake County Youth Services has, uh, I believe, removed everything from the building. As far as I understand, they're done removing things from the building. So we still have a couple sinks in the kitchen. Um, and, uh, we, they did contest our, um, unlawful detainer. So there is. An eviction hearing on November fourteenth, um, you know. I explained to some representatives, I didn't understand why they moved everything out when they thought they were going to try to contest our eviction hearing and then they would have to move it all back in if they won. But nonetheless, that's what they did. Um, so we'll keep you updated on that. This has been a kind of slow process over several months, but it's, it's frustrating to see. Um, the successes the cities had related to mandatory garbage and our code enforcement efforts, but. Still continually suffer from a lot of illegal dumping in the community. Um, I know it's going to be difficult to eliminate that entirely, but we've tried to. Do some additional analysis and see, you know, why is this happening? Um. So we had our GIS consultant, um, do some analysis. I just received some information back from them today. Um, but. In spite of mandatory garbage, we got a list of, um, actual customers from, um, our waste taller. And the exemptions that have been approved and, um, they did analysis of the whole city. Based on a number of things, whether there's a building on the property, value of structure from tax data and so forth. And it looks like there's somewhere over fifteen hundred properties that should be receiving, that should have garbage service that do not. Um, and that's a pretty, pretty big number. So we're gonna set up a meeting with our waste taller and our city staff and try to figure out. What we can do about this with the hope being that, um, we're able to, uh, get garbage service at those occupied properties. Um, and, you know, hopefully see less dumping in the community. That I would share, um, I don't know if any of you saw the, uh, a number of correspondences that came out this afternoon related to Governor Newsom's. Um, press conference today where, um, he symbolically rejected every homeless action plan in the state. And halted one billion dollars of homelessness funding to cities, counties and continu- continuums of care. Um, and he said, all of the cities need to do better, and if they don't, he's going to be the mayor of California. So I'm sure more to come on that, but, um, it sounds like your, your job's all in jeopardy and, um. The plan to demolish, uh, local control, um, is, you know, in full force. So, and then with that, I think there's, uh, something additional that Chief White, uh, wanted to update.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to update the, uh, the council. I know there was a lot of discussion, uh, online regarding some threats that were made to our. Historic trick or treating area, um, on Halloween. The department was aware of those. We had been following up, um, prior to that. We had not been able to develop any credible information regarding it, but we know it's circulating around. People are contacting the schools. I was in contact with the, uh, superintendent. So I want to let you know, we did deploy additional resources. We had ten additional resources on duty that night, um, that were patrolling within that area and then covering, uh, calls for service. Um, to try to make sure it's a safe trick or treating experience. I received, um, information from the community that they greatly appreciated that. Um, I did make a conscious decision not to publicize that we were doing that primarily because all this rhetoric was being driven online. Um, I also wanted to mention that I think probably sooner than later, um, there's gonna have to be some discussion probably about whether. The police department continues with a Facebook page. Um, if you aren't aware, the animal shelter in Mendocino County had their Facebook page summarily removed. Um, apparently because they used the word euthanasia on there, um, and they had no notice from Facebook. They tried to reach out, they couldn't get information. And my concern is that, you know, pre other systems like pre Nixal and everything else, that was sort of the de facto platform. For the city to get information out. The problem is it's a private enterprise. We do a lot of advertising for a private, private enterprise. Um, by putting it on business cards, those sorts of things. Um, and I think now there's so many better options that exist out there for the city to reach. You know, our constituents, your constituents, um, and have a platform that's reliable, because I could only think is. You know, we have an animal shelter. We were just talking about overpopulation. What if we mentioned a word? I can tell you, we had, um, one post since I've been here that was censored and. The best we could tell was because it had the Ford emblem where the police officer is doing a traffic stop. My concern would be is if the public. Comes, you know, and counts on that Facebook is a source of information and then we get shut down one night, we can't turn it back on. We're beholden to that. So, um, we don't have anything in the works yet, but I can tell you there's been discussions on more than one agencies about sort of deplatforming. Um, and looking at our own solutions, you know, cities can get apps, that sort of thing. It's much more available, um, and control. And then, of course, with Nixal, so. Two kind of loosely related things, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that we were paying attention. We did hear the community concerns. Um, but I had to make that decision and I stand by that. I just didn't want to go on and publicize and then further fuel somebody to to do something. Uh, we are actively working the case that sort of relates to that with the homicide that had occurred. Um, so that's going on. The other thing is that we did have a missing person who was found deceased in the county. Um, again, some information being circulated online. I can tell you that case was taken in. We did follow up. We did searching in the area and so forth. Um. And as with any other investigation, we will do the investigative work. Sometimes it takes a while to get things done, particularly in a homicide, but you get one shot. At getting a case prosecuted. Um, so, you know, we'll take the bad publicity and so forth, but to do the right thing by the community and and consistent with the, uh. The law. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Quick comment. Uh, thank you, Chief, to not be, uh, totally reliable on social media. Um, it's. It's not always the best way. And you proved it and you did the right thing. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Councilmember Claffey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, sorry. Um, so, uh, city manager Flora mentioned the countywide recreation center. Meeting. I thought that went really well. Um, I think there's gonna be some really great opportunities down the line for our community in in building some of these facilities. Um, we, I had the Lake County Tourism Improvement District meeting this week. Uh, it looks like thanks to some work by Mr. Flora. We are very close to approving or gaining approval to do, to increase the rate up to two point five percent for our out of town. Visitors and get that renewed at the countywide level. Um, I had the pleasure of attending the two, uh, events put on by our, our council members and I'm sure they will. Promote it, but just incredible work by both of you organizing the, the Lower Lake cleanup and of course trunk or treat. Um, wonderful tournament turnout, great benefit to our community. Thank you for, for all the work that you do. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Overton.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, that it was, it was really nice working with the pig station and and the city and to make this trunk or treat happen. Uh, I did come on board kind of the last minute again, and I don't know if some of you guys know that I broke my ankle, so I wasn't out as much, but thank you. Uh, our supervisor Bruno hit, uh, got out there and and helped get some money to get some candy. Um, probably the largest event we've had. I didn't really expect it to be as large because it was on a Saturday instead of, of Thanksgiving, but it seemed like it. Went very well and was larger than normal. Uh, so I think every year this is just gonna get bigger and so, um, I'm gonna be working with, uh. Tina, our new director of our recreation department and, uh, trying to make, you know, put a, like a festival together. I think we should be having festivals. So I'm also. We were gonna put lights around the trees and I bought a set of solar lights for Christmas. Um, and we're, we're gonna try them out, make sure they work, because Tina and I decided we just buy them ourselves. Uh, unfortunately, somebody cut off the solar part. Of the thing, so we're trying to figure out like how we can still maybe do that, but I don't know. Uh, we, we're gonna have to work on that because I'd really like to see that with lights in our park, you know, and and start. Adding every year something, you know, it's gonna be a gradual thing. I believe the county was giving us some trees, is the fake trees, is that county or the city?
Uh, well, they were the, they're formerly from the city of Lakeport before they did their streetlights and they are the property of Lakeport Main Street now, but they. So that's who offered them to us, so.
So we're gonna get some things and gonna kind of decorate the gazebo up for Santa Claus is gonna be and stuff a little differently than what we normally have. So, um, and then we're going to be, um, having, um, uh, on December the third, the morning, we're gonna have, um. Uh, breakfast with Santa. It is as a cost. It's gonna be fifteen for adults and ten dollars for kids. Um, but, you know, we're gonna have it. I think it's just one of those things that we're gonna add for that day and and just keep adding, you know, things so that we can start. Having festivals on these holidays, make it a true festival thing. Um, I'm going to be doing, uh, Thanksgiving, uh, luncheon on Thanksgiving Day at, down at the community center slash senior center. Uh, from eleven to two. And we're also on the start of the War for the Winter program. Uh, I've been doing that so long, I can't even remember how long I've been doing that. I think it's seventeen, eighteen years, somewhere around in there. Um, but, uh, we're, we're working with, uh, Rotarians, uh, the Clear Lake Rotary Club, uh, and we're gonna be giving, doing the giveaway at their. Lunch on December tenth. Uh, so during that time, we'll be doing our War for the Winter. We've been doing that for about five or six, seven years. So, so, and it works out really well, everybody can, so they can donate clothes down at, uh, Senior Center during the hours of nine to two, so.
What types of clothes in their condition?
Good condition, no dirty clothes, uh, and winter clothes. Uh, please don't know, no, we don't need any summer clothes, what, you know, we needed. This gloves, socks, hats, coats, warm shirts, pants, you know, stuff like that. So, uh, we're really trying to, you know, just keep it. At that, that level because we get overwhelmed with, uh, too much clothes when it, when we do it with other things. And then I'm working right now with, um, the, uh, Jamison Ranch to do, uh, vaccine and chip again. We'll be doing that in February. We have it booked already, so, so, uh, people can start looking forward to, uh, maybe thinking, I know that's a little bit ahead, but. It's always good to start getting people out there and and know that what we're working on, so. And I I really do want to thank, uh, Tina. And and, uh, you know, for all the work that she's done. She's really working hard to try to make our events, uh, you know, pop. And and I like working with her. She's. Got a lot of great ideas and Bruno, and that, we're all working with her and it seems to be working out very well. So I'm glad we, we made that department.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Kramer.
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilmember Claffey for your comments. I thought the cleanup of the cemetery went exceptionally well. A great community event. Bring on, uh, Lake Links meeting, the last one, we are still working on, uh, getting the kinks out on our. Our ride share, our new ride share program, which will supplement our pay your pal program where a person. Has a friend drive them and then we pay them, uh, mileage. This one would be basically the same thing except for instead of a friend. Uh, the Lake Links will choose the drivers will, and our soliciting drivers will do the background checks. And so on. So I think it'll be a great expansion to that service. I was. Asked by Supervisor Sabatia earlier this week to accept a position on a new committee Hazard Mitigation Committee. Um, OES, I believe, is, is overseeing it, uh, county OES. Um, their first meeting is next thirty on Thursday. Unfortunately, I will be unavailable for that, but I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity. And last, as far as events in the future. Uh, December ninth, we've chosen, which normally in last year with, uh, Lower Lake had its. It's, it's, uh, Christmas parade, uh, on December second, the day before, they're like, Dan. This year, we're moving it to December ninth, which will be the, the following week. It'll be a, a street fair followed by a, uh. Night parade, um, in Lower Lake. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Sluton.
Well, um. Things got kind of derailed, so I didn't attend any major events. Uh, so, um. I really have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I kind of had a similar, we haven't had much to do, but I do want. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I kind of had a similar, we haven't had much to do, but I do want to recognize a couple of things that have happened uh, just today. Number one, I'd like to congratulate our local uh. Grocery store, food, et cetera. Uh, they are certified now as a blue zone store. Um, quite a good distinction and uh, offering additional um, healthy options uh, for your purchasing. Um, real good project for not just Clear Lake, but Lake County in trying to drive uh, our health. Uh, standards and wellbeing and also congratulations to Gannock D Unified School District as being also blue zone certified. Uh, attended both of those events today. Um, looking forward to attending uh, the One Team One Dream event on Saturday. Um, I think that's going to be a, a real positive thing. I'd like to thank the city of Clear Lake for sponsoring that event. Um, thank you, Mr. Flora. And that concludes my remarks. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting and go into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, future agenda items. I apologize.
Sorry. Normally this isn't a time for me to bring those up, but um, if the council doesn't have any, I would like to bring one up and see if you want to bring it back.
Go ahead.
So the sulfur fire was in twenty seventeen, the city. After that, um, created. Sort of an exemption for folks who lost their home. As a result of that fire that they could build. Their house back the same. As it was before, even if it was non-conforming with the current zoning standards. As you probably know, there's a lot of homes up there that don't. That were built in a time that doesn't conform with some zoning standards. So. That was a two-year window. Um, I think we may had a couple of people take advantage of that, but. Um, very, as you know, very few building happened in that two-year window for a variety of reasons. Um, we're starting to see more happen. Um, and we've had a couple of inquiries recently about um. Whether. They could still kind of like fall under that exemption and, you know, it took insurance a long time to do things. I think some PG&E money finally started rolling out. And so my question to the council is. Are you interested in considering that or not? If so, I'll bring something back to talk about it.
Councilmember Claffey? Yeah, I just have a quick question. Is that, was that extent, exemption transferable? So if they sold the property to a new property?
I don't believe so.
No. Mayor Slotan, thank you.
But it, it would have to apply it. Are, are we uh, going to implement the uh, the new um, the new building code shortly too, or? Is that something that we need to?
Wouldn't, it wouldn't um, have any impact on the. The building code. It's, it's more like some setback limitations, like if it was. Less than twenty feet in the front setback. Um, there's a few that have, um, you know, we have a requirement that you have. Covered parking.
If I may, I, I don't know that we should be discussing all the things that should be.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, just trying to give you an idea.
But I, I think we do need to bring it back and I would like to see what you can prepare. For us.
I second that, yes.
We have consensus? There you go. Any other future agenda items? All right. Uh, again, thank you all. We're going to close this uh, session and, and retire to closed session.
I'll be right back.
We'll have a five-minute break. See you, Bruno.